Annual session here with the Webster County Board and we are going to-
I'll make a motion to proceed with option A.
Okay, we have a first and a second for option A. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Who was this?
All ayes from Webster. No one opposed? Option A carries.
Thank you guys for joining us today.
Thank you very much, everybody. I think we're good here?
Let us know when you hear something.
Thank you.
We used to throw the switch on that thing.
Can I just-
Thank you, just shut her down?
Yeah.
It got stuffy once you shut it on, that's for sure. Sometimes you gotta do like this to it.
Alright, we are in grain needs and we are looking at accepting a petition for grain district number twenty-nine, open ditch clean out. So we'll start there. Petition in front of us for the clean out upset ditch. Number ten is just start all around right north of Gary Jensen's property.
Yeah, I don't know, I haven't heard anything about this, so I don't, I guess that's what we're gonna see what's over there.
Glad you are.
Well, this is new to us too, so-
This is Alan. Peterson, Doug, isn't it?
Yeah, and they're far- they're farther down the ditch, so they're affected by the same.
Is this pretty much picture or compass? This is it?
Yeah, that'd be laying-
Would you say?
Yep, um, there might be a little at the outlet to the east.
Should be where?
About here.
Over here.
Over here, where you at?
The red line is one sixteen.
And that says highway one sixty-nine?
Yeah.
And so there's a, I don't know if we can do anything with the outlet part, but it might need to tend to.
You can go down two hundred yards usually.
Yeah, you can strip it out.
It looks like it's been-
This is not-
This is not-
That's a, yeah, that's seven. Just that one.
Uh, we're getting big plans.
We're getting to the big picture. Yeah, there's-
Don't need my cheaters for that one.
Does help. That'd be one sixty-nine. Swear we won't be like that. Well, here one sixty-nine, this BD twenty-nine starts right here at Bloody Run. And then this is all no man's land back to the river. And then it follows through here, it's not, not very long, but comes back into here.
About what, one, two, three miles, four miles?
Probably not even that, two and a, two and a half.
Two and a half, oh yeah.
And that'd be the end of it. And then there's, but they've been, uh, but it is, we got stuff sloughed off through the whole thing. And I guess that's what I was wondering, what, what the plan is, 'cause there's a, in nineteen seventy-nine, it was clean. And I know there was a, a bridge taken out by my place and a culvert put in. Well, we always question the size of the culvert like everybody else.
Is it a steel or is it a steel pipe?
Yeah.
Okay.
But here on one sixty-nine, it's a big concrete-
Box culvert?
Culvert. And, you know, at the time, I think they wanted, there was just as much cost in redoing that as dredging the whole thing.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
And I don't remember, again, this, that's before my time almost, but this dredge ditch, it has good fall on it, a part of it, and then it goes flat and then good fall. What they wanted to do at the time was re-dredge it, but when it got in that box, box culvert, they had to change the depth of that.
Yeah, I didn't know that happened.
They changed the-
It was just, just way too crazy. But it's sloughing off and we are having issues with it. You know, that's what we wondered, is, is it, is it just to clean it in spots, is it clean it in, you know, from one end to the other? I mean, we're almost feeling like it could use the whole thing. But, but there has been numerous studies done on this one. Uh, I think the last one was done two thousand and four, but I don't know how complete. You know, did it, did it, I know it was on several tile. There's a big, remember when we did the, the egg drain well project on that? We had a whole, I think they added seven hundred acres up on the west end. We took away grain wells and put big tile in there, so we do have a lot more water handling now than we did before. But-
So you may have some concerns on the pipe on, what is that, street?
This-
This one here, on the side, you've got concerns on that?
Yeah, this, uh, this is to the north side, this is still existing, that's the same, it's solid right here.
No, the culvert through the road, or the pipe through the road here.
That'd be right here.
Yeah, what is that road?
I think that's Kentucky out here.
That's Kentucky, yes.
Seven footer?
I believe it's a seven footer, I'm not positive it was installed before I started.
Yeah, that, like I said, I think that was seventy-nine, it was done, we took the bridge out and took it right there.
You were really young in seventy-nine.
I'm still really young.
At that age.
Just don't look too close.
It's right and really fast now.
Gary Jensen, not at heart. There you have it.
You know that works.
Yeah, alright. But it was, it's, uh, but it needs to be cleaned and I, I don't know, Dave Undermark and I were talking about it just a little bit, and it's, to have somebody go in there and just touch it up, I, we feel like it'd be better to do either the bulk of the studies and see what's there.
I mean, do you think, do you think it needs to be surveyed and get the elevations corrected? Like, sometimes we find that when they dug them many, many years ago, to clean them to the hard bottom, that's still, it's not originally done properly, properly the first time. So, so clean it to the hard bottom, a lot of times, isn't the best thing to do.
Right. We just need to hire an engineer and have him go in and figure it out and then decide and get it cleaned and they don't want it spot cleaned, because that does not work in some ways. There's a lot of acres go through that anymore, Jensen, what'd you say, seven hundred and fifty extra acres?
Was this the last one? I know they added seven, seven hundred. You know, that was to the, just original. But then, like I said, we had to add grain wells.
That got closed, that and all those there?
So all those acres got, so we're dealing with a lot more water than we were thirty years. But it's, I mean, it was designed for that originally.
Yeah.
But it was, uh, but it just, you know, we did like to have, I think, either from the information they've got from the studies in the past, or to, to check, double check it. And let's just see what we got, and then make the evaluation, or do we, do we go for a complete cleaning, or do we go for, just maybe, maybe it does need spots, I don't know. But without checking it. Chances are, rather than cleaned out at all, nothing since thinking seventy-nine. Not that I know of.
That's, that's forty years.
It needs to-
It needs to-
Obviously, given the fall of that, some places will be more and some will be less, but it tends that a complete clean out is better than it's done. Yeah, it's just, it's just if we, you know, if we get, if we get, if we get the numbers. Then when you said there was engineering done on this in two thousand and four? There was engineering- Do you have record of that?
I think so, it might be your-
Yeah, you know, section one of what, when they did, when they did lateral H and I, which were the ones to the south, that was two thousand and four. And then I know there was study done in ninety-two and in seventy-nine. I don't, it's not in this, uh, this was done by Westergaard. Seventy-nine was an engineering report, grain study in ninety-two, ninety-three, which resulted in the egg grain well closure. And then, uh, two thousand and four, I think that was, that was one that was a mistake. They did a study, there was talk about a, a, a short tile being replaced, and they just studied the whole thing. And we fought it, because that's not what we asked for. We asked for one tile to be reexamined. And, uh, so they should have, you know, it wasn't intended to be done, but it got done, so those numbers should be there. And there should, you know, we should be able to get the profile of the ditch anyway. Definitely know. I guess that's our feeling, is we just, you know, rather than just go in there and, you know, hit the high points. Let's take a look at it, let's make that decision after we get the study to be worth the money. So the landlord is safer, that's obviously, that are in this district, that are in BD twenty-nine. I don't know if you wanted to make a comment of some of the ditch cleaning minus engineering?
Yeah. Yeah, well, we had one cleaned. It, we, we cleaned Humble's portion of it, it's a joint one with Webster. And the, the upper end was the worst, of course, it's silt to den and we hired a guy, he come in there, I went out with him, we probed it. It went anywhere from about three feet of silt down to a foot. So we went down to a half mile into Webster and cleaned, cleaned the upper end. Thirty, thirty-two thousand dollars. And it was twice this size, probably, or close to twice this length. Uh, but if the ditch wasn't done correctly the first time, cleaning it back to original isn't gonna benefit you a whole lot. And when we were probing this one out here, somebody had overdug the center of it, 'cause we went from three foot of silt to a foot of silt, to three foot of silt, to a foot of silt. So it was going like this, you know?
It kinda, you know, in fact, this, this headache you guys are fighting for quite a while now, it's oversight. You know, it's gotta be, somebody's gotta look, watch this stuff. I mean, it's, uh, don't wanna have to, but that's what's turned it into.
Yeah.
Uh, we've felt, I mean, you, you know contractors that do this for a living, so to speak. And reputable contractors that have cleaned out dozens and hundreds of miles of ditch, typically go, go, go off engineering for this. They, they know what they're doing.
They, they go by the feel of the ditch, but what I'm saying, if the ditch wasn't done correctly the first time, it will still be incorrect when it gets done cleaning. So if you're looking for an engineering part, I think we should have somebody survey it, if that's what you're thinking the ditch is correct.
I mean, it's the request of the landlord.
Yeah, it's your money, because-
Well, I'm just saying, you know, I'm kinda surprised, you know, the Petersons aren't here right now, 'cause I mean, they have to have a bull in this. And I, I mean, I just-
Did they say anything, Chris, when they brought it in?
Nope. Petition, petition where it is. Uh, I'm, this is just, you already mentioned, uh, past engineering reports. If, I mean, entirely up to what the consensus of the district is, but is it worth revisiting? You said two thousand and four, they did a report, not that they needed to, but was done.
Right.
Things are not gonna change particularly with elevate, if it was done properly. That is still quite valid, I would think, because when you get into en- engineering, it, it's expensive.
Yeah, it'll be ten thousand dollars.
They're usually good for ten years.
Let's do it right?
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
What, if one is held-
Maybe it'll last another four years.
Yeah, 'cause like I said, we found out here in this ditch out there, somewhere in the past, they've overdug it, or maybe it was done that way originally. 'Cause, you know, you should go from three feet of silt gradually down to nothing, not three to one to three to one, so.
So did, when they petitioned for this, did they file a bond or?
No.
So they just petitioned to look at?
No bonds needed anymore, I guess, according to our legal, because of, this would be a maintenance situation, if it was an establishment of something new.
Or an improvement.
Different.
So in cleaning this, or spot cleaning, or taking a strat, reaching a grade?
What, what's, what we're saying is, we, we don't have to have this engineered, it's up to your discretion. If you want it engineered, surveyed, um-
Well, that's our feeling, and I guess, like I say, we just don't know, you know, what the intent features. You know, if it's just, they saw some weeds in there, so we need to get them out, you know, maybe that's all they're thinking. But we're, we're just talking about, we've talked about this for a long time, this is something-
How many acres are in this district, do you think? Roughly, do you guys, do you guys have any idea how many acres are in this district, roughly?
I'm guessing this doesn't have to be a full clean out.
It's gonna be a couple thousand acres, yeah, right? It should be, yeah.
Couple thousand, yeah, so you're probably five bucks naked for the engineering.
They took out the egg grain well, so you added to the end of this ditch.
Okay.
You know, you know Bruce on the bright end, blacked out where that rough spot is, where that crack starts, they dug all that up and put that big bike in there and went up, a gold grain well. So we got a lot of extra water out of that gum in this way.
So my question is, do we have to ask Petersons?
No, I don't think we do.
We don't have to ask them if they would re-
Request an engineer?
Engineering, but these guys, they didn't sign this petition.
Yeah.
They did.
I, I think as trustees, it's our decision whether we want it engineered. We ask plumbers our opinion, and it's our decision as trustees to do it one way or the other.
I guess I'd like to then find out what you're thinking.
Who's that? He was wanting to clean out.
No, we can do whatever we want.
He was wanting to clean out.
Okay.
If it's a request for maintenance, I think you have to- If it's motion then?
Well, the, the request is to evaluate the open ditch for cleanup. It's a revaluation, is what they're requesting.
I mean, to evaluate it and?
Well, and what we've done on two, one that just got completed that you described. And we have another one, same contractor, they're getting reputable ditch cleaning contractor, is doing the same thing. There is no petition, there is nothing, there's no engineering, because it's kind of a cut and dry deal, and it is way less expensive.
Yeah, so-
And I think it's, they're, I don't know that long, would you consider, I mean, it was in Humble County's portion, virtually a complete clean out, was it not?
Yeah, they, they went from, like I, like I say, a half mile into Webster and cleaned the whole way to the end. Uh, but, like I said, there was something, the, the bottom wasn't right in that ditch. Because you shouldn't go from three feet of silt, one feet of silt, three feet of silt.
But they still were able to-
But he cleaned it, yeah.
And do it properly.
Yeah.
And you went out and had looked when he was done, and that was a good-
Yeah, good job.
Dave, did you say there was like five, six feet of silt possibly?
I'd say there is in places, and there are chances, the way the water's going around from bank to bank.
It's, it's certain kind of thing.
Yeah, 'cause that's what it does, once it's lost, and it starts snaking, and then it eats into the bank worse.
But that's-
They're gonna move a lot of dirt in places there, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that, I guess that's our, our question, you know, it's, uh, you know, go take an option off, yeah, that's gonna help. And like, you know, and I don't know who you're talking about, it doesn't make any difference, but, um, I guess to go into this, I guess if we have a study done on it, then we know we're, we're taking out X amount of, two to three yards of dirt. Boom, and it'll be, there'll be an order.
Yeah.
If we don't, you know- It is difficult. But this is so severe, like, like David said. They might spend the rest of the year, I don't know. And, you know, possibly this is one that you can't keep under the repair limit cost. And what, what is, uh? Right now it's fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
Okay, well, that's, now, I'm not gonna say one with- No, I mean, it's like I say, it's up to the district landlords, that's really, um-
Do you have an engineering firm that would be of interest to use?
I haven't talked to anybody about this, I have not, but, uh, that young kid that's coming from Hilton, I know that Colin Clingsford, or whatever his name is. There's a sheriff young man, I think, he was out and looked at our other project we got going on, and there's a good young man there, and I'm assuming he'd be doing some of this too, probably. I don't know if you people have met him yet or not, but-
I haven't met him.
Nice young guy. Very knowledgeable. We got McClures, that young kid that did this preliminary up there, when you hired him for a second opinion.
There's their kids.
Really a good kid too, out of Fort Dodge.
And make sure they're the field inspectors for the engineering company.
Ben, do you know either one of those?
The companies, yeah, I'm familiar with both companies, I'm not familiar with Colin, um, McClure, I'm not sure if that's Dan Weedmeyer.
He's an engineer, he makes sure he's a field guy.
Yeah, I haven't met their field.
I know.
This young kid, he lives, what, Lake City or Sack City or something, and he's a nice kid too, and really knowledgeable also.
I've, well, I'm only gonna make a suggestion, that first of all, as far as this project, I'd probably venture to guess it wouldn't be done this year, at this point. Given the contractors that you would want.
The local guys, I think, are too busy to get it done this year.
And they've got, we know what they're doing, and they want the, you know, ability to get in there, they, they need to get finished up where they are. So it's probably gonna be an extra year project anyway.
And this, this one here, if it gets over the estimate over that fifty thousand, then it has to go out to public bids.
Sure.
So then you take the risk of getting whoever, 'cause we've had a couple of those whoevers, and they weren't very good.
But even, even at the very least, if we do the study.
Then you know.
We know.
Yeah.
And, and even to go back to, you know, the local guys, they're gonna know, they'll be able to see the cuts and fills.
And you got the, didn't you say it was done in two thousand?
Well, I don't know how complete.
No, I know, but I'm just saying that they got some of the material that isn't gonna be very much from what it was in two thousand, early.
It is, uh, but yeah, there, there could be a wealth of knowledge in their foremost report, and I didn't have those, but it's, uh, it'd be worth looking at. It's the fear that it probably would be, and that's why I mentioned, it's, it's not gonna start, have this all in place, it's not gonna start next week anyway. And maybe the due diligence would be to check on some of these things that were brought up. Uh, not much for tabling things, but certainly for a couple of weeks, and then do a little more research. And see, see where we might pull out with this, because, you know, I think one thing, as a board of supervisors, we maintain the best of our ability, being fiscally responsible. So then you go to the grainage side, and being the trustees, same thing, fiscally responsible, we don't. Look what they wanna spend, landlord's money, if there's no need for it. And what I'm afraid of, that if you include an engineering report, that is probably, it screws into that fifty thousand.
Yeah, I could, we get some-
To have to go to bid, so if you already have a twenty thousand dollar engineering report to tell you what's going on, you don't have much to work with for hiring someone without it. And, and keeping it away from going off the bids. Uh, on the engineer, is that, you guys as trustees make that call, or us as landlords?
We make, we make the, we hire an engineer, we take, we take recommendations.
Right, input from the landlord, just like David had mentioned, we have familiarity, uh, but Rick also made a valid point, if this is something that goes to bid, and it's just like any other project, the lowest bid wins. And that's, that can be a rough deal.
Unless we have reasonable cause.
Correct.
I know.
The, uh, I guess my thoughts would be, if we do, and maybe this is wrong, but I am a little bit intrigued in this.
Yeah, you, you know, you know-
But I just, I wouldn't mind having a conversation with the engineer, and just say, this is our thoughts.
Yes.
You know, you look at it, tell us what we're holding, or we, you know, are we on the right track?
You should be able to have the input into it.
No, absolutely, that would, yeah.
That doesn't make sense to me.
But, you know, and, and, you know, obviously, trying to tell them what to do, but, you know, just show them what our, what our thoughts are, what our thinking is, and, uh-
Is it completely dry?
Is it all dry up there? Twice as close as it's been.
That's what I wanted.
Yeah, yeah, it, it is a good time to do a study. Yeah.
Right.
We'll get the last license and then they can see what's, what's actually going on. You'll get your hands on that other study, to see what it has in there. And, and, I mean, there should be the profile from the original, and like-
Yeah, they have it.
If there's mistakes on it, you know, you know, we won't know that until it's, it's surveyed.
Yeah.
But at least we would know, you know, what the highs and lows are. I mean, that would be a little research involved over the next week or two, uh, that is on file, most engineering reports are on file. Right, right. And, so all it's supposed to be, but, uh, rather than, you know, redo something entirely, that might come back with almost the same results, and spend a lot of money doing it. That might answer some questions, I guess, if you see that information and don't feel that, that questions are adequately answered, you might have to start over. And, yeah, that's what calls for it, and that's what calls. I mean, that's understandable. But that's, I think, where the conversation with the engineer would be, right, he knows where we're coming from. Oh, absolutely.
Alright, I'll make a motion to accept this petition, but we will hold off on hiring an engineer till we get more information.
Who is this?
Sam.
Any day, if you don't want to.
The second and the third, so we have that, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Petition accepted, more research needed. Does that mean, you know, find any role in through?
Is there a share in what we brought up?
We'll have a little research, see what you can dig up.
Well, you don't have to, I'm just gonna say the-
Justin's gonna share a little bit with us, it was down by the fairgrounds.
Oh, okay, yeah.
We are working on thirteen- In a climbing paddock. The, uh, when I talked to you before, Chris, I think we'd kinda decided that was thirteen, we were on the twenty-four inch, and went through the center of the, the racetrack on the fairgrounds. Uh, what we got is, we dug up an area, we had twenty-four inch tiles, half full dirt, and at the outlet attempt, so we got a plug under the track, and it was somewhere in the wood.
When you say track, I'm hoping you're saying racetrack.
Yes. 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 I don't know what's, there is one tree, my guys are down there right now, they're digging on it, but, uh, there is one tree dead center on top of this pile. Digging just to sneak and-
Suspicion of a big root ball.
We might have a lot of roots in there. Then we won't have to track, and so we're trying to-
Don't give us a lot of trouble with horse people.
The numbers are much, are against me on this one, but, uh, but, so we are working on that. Um, it was mentioned to me that on thirteen A, and then there's the city, has, uh, their storm circle was parallel to the east side of the track. That's also where gas main runs, that's also where fiber optic runs, where everything's there. On that fence line, it's full of trees. And that right above thirteen A and, and, uh, I don't know how that's, how you guys have got that set up, you know, with the city, if that's a joint project, or if it's, if there's easement, uh-
They technically are the owners of thirteen A, we are the bookkeeping.
Yeah.
You're the what?
Bookkeeping.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we do the levying, they own it.
I don't know.
They have, they have control over it, put it that way.
So who makes the call? Are you, you guys trustees of that, that, or do you?
No, I don't, I don't believe we are.
Or does that go to the council?
I think the city council, yeah.
So, I don't know, we need to know who calls it.
I visited with Paul on that fence line, and he said if trees are on our side, we'd gladly take them out.
Yes.
Just, we gotta get rid of them.
Yeah.
And I said, but, but one on the other side of the fence is not so willing to-
Yeah, he likes, he likes trees.
He likes trees, which-
But typically, these all have an easement over the top of them where you can maintain them.
I think it would have to be over, like I said, thirteen A, and then there is a storm circle, so there should be almost a dull easement over that.
Well, anything that obstructs the drainage just-
Fair game.
Is fair game to repair.
Many years ago, part of that was replaced because of- Many years ago, part of that was replaced because the roots had gotten so bad. Um, and I believe, I believe that was...
Part of it.
13A.
I think Doug Morris, who did quite good at that.
Yeah, I'll bet, that was probably 25 years ago. Uh, but I, I think that was 13A, this kind of who repaired that.
Yeah.
But, uh, but since then, all this other stuff, the lady was put in, and the whole city, and all, everything's changed on that. I think there was...
Yeah, there ain't near as much going in there that goes in there, and...
Yeah. So, I guess...
Well, and we also had a issue in the road dents.
Right.
That turned out to be nothing. On Highway 3?
Hopefully.
He thinks that, the state guy thinks that when they pulled that fiber optic down that ditch, it might have caused the...
The water to channel through there.
Water to follow the, the fiber optics down the ditch. But didn't you say you had a broken...
What, a manhole?
Manhole up there. The only thing that might have been where the water was running to and caused that to fall out.
And that's, that's probably what...
Got a lot of dirt in it?
It, it did. It broke, it, it went through the side of the manhole. And, uh, and I know we repaired that. I think we had to put a comb on, on that manhole itself. But, uh...
I gotta go sign my case.
Yep.
I don't know.
All right.
So I guess, uh, yeah, more an update than anything. I will, I guess that is kind of what, what I need to know is basically who we're working for, or, or, you know, are we pulling trees for the city, or drainage district, or...
If you're pulling trees, you're going for the city.
I mean, that's, that's the easy way. I understand.
But we need to tap thing, you know? If you do any changes, we need to have maps there, too. And I don't know. I really don't, don't know how this works with the...
With what?
With the drainage district.
Right.
Because I got in on the end of 80 and 13A when I came in. Everything was done before then.
Yep.
I just, it's a bill of art.
Lucky you.
I've got a big apartment there.
What else?
Yes.
I know where you live.
So do I.
We'll take your mail.
Okay.
Yeah, we just want to, are, so do you want to check with the city, or...
I can. I mean, I, and I guess that's why I'm asking is, you know, what direction do I go?
Have you talked to them yet?
No, I haven't.
About it? Check with them?
So I'll ta, I will do that. I'll check with them. If you can check and see what, what there is for an easement over 13A. You know, because, you know, I don't know the exact location. I had locations done on the south end, and I know the fiber and the gas run pretty dang close, five, six feet away. And I know, and I think they're on the fairground side the whole way. And, but I'm just, I'm not positive on 13A. I think they cut out a long house on the south end, which means I, well, I think they might have...
Yeah, it kind of looks like it.
Well, when that storm circle was put into the city, it took before, there's some huge junction boxes in there.
Really?
Yeah. You'll bled on that, scared you.
Take your way. Yeah, I think we could...
Well, if you could check on that, uh, you know, I don't mean to ask, you know, to cut it with you, but... I guess that's my question would be, uh, the easement part of, part of it, where I can and can't work. And, uh, and then I'll find out with the city whether we're verified on that.
Maybe...
Yeah.
Really wishing to go.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, you know, that's not cheap. I mean, we're thinking right now, we got a 24-inch tile, it's full of roots.
That's...
That's where the roots, that's there.
It is.
And this is, this is bigger yet on the other end, both for city and for this.
And all it takes is one thing starts, and then it starts backing up, and we got a mess.
So you're saying the fiber optic goes right along there also?
Right along the fence line, yes.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. I, I didn't have it located the whole length of the fairgrounds, but I know it's pretty tight.
So that's something else to consider in taking out the trees, then?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, you pull, pull a tree out, here comes the cable with it.
You know, then that's...
Kind of good, too.
A deal like that, kind of what we've done in the past, we just cut them, it'll store it.
Torde on them and kill them.
Spotless.
We don't want to say, pretty much, pull on it and say, oh, boy.
Yeah. Somebody needs to fix this.
Can the road roofer take out those? Or is that too large of a tile?
It's, you can do that. There are, there are machines big enough to do that. It's just temporary.
Right, until you kill them.
Until you, you gotta kill the trees.
Yeah. And I've even been told...
You gotta kill them, wait a couple of years, they say.
I remember, yeah, this was the brother, Corbaker, I was talking to her once. And I said, what happens? And she says, even after you kill the tree, well, roots will still continue to grow for five years.
Geez!
So, you know, it's not even really a, a quick fix, because it's going to, it's going to come back.
The second one, it's dead, they're dead, but they're not...
They're not. Yeah, there's still being, there's still being sustained. So, yeah, so, I mean, that would be an emergency fix, would be just open it up. I would look at that as maintenance, you know? That's, I mean, we fight that with sanitary sewers all the time, too.
Yeah.
We always end up going back.
You always come back and have to put a new, a new one in.
It just is always...
Job security.
Yeah.
Job security, though.
I don't need that anymore.
All right, Jerry, you like to do it on the job security?
Do you have anything else?
Anything else in drainage?
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanks, engineer.
Thank you, Chris.
Anything else in drainage?
The only thing I, I have is, I did look through the, um, uh, contract with, um, King Construction, contracting, whatever they are, with 35 Branch C. And it does say in there, provide a photograph to the engineer showing each tile connection before it in fact builds, must include adequate location information from each photograph, providing the engineer with the GPS location of each tile location and the size of material of each tile connected. So Rick called me last week or so, Hopper, and said they got ahold of Jordan. No, was it Jordan?
Jordan.
Yeah, Jordan. And he is more than willing to help out on this. They didn't leave on bad terms or anything like that. So, um, he says that the contracting company did not provide that information.
It's not our problem, that's his problem. It's his, his contract that he's going to have it.
Yeah, that has responsibility to get it.
Yeah. It's also in their contract.
Yeah, they, they have to get it. Yeah. So they know what's being provided. If they didn't get it, they got to go out.
Yeah, they should have said, hey, right then and there, you didn't give it to us, we want it now. That's, pretty easy fix.
So that makes me wonder also on engineering. Do you guys have contracts with engineering? You engineer your own, I'm sure.
Yeah, since I started here, we do all of our own.
Oh, boy.
Did you before?
Uh, no.
Were there contracts with engineering firms?
Yes.
For their part to...
Yes.
So maybe we need to implement something.
Or we have the contract.
Well, that was the contract with the contractor, not the engineering firm. I mean, essentially, they haven't provided, I don't know. I don't know where the gap is, but I think in the future, maybe have everybody covered. Everybody has to live up to their responsibilities per a contract. I mean, it seems to work effectively with their second, very roads. I don't know why we can't make it work either.
Uh, I, I think, so before I was there, I know they had, uh, engineering firms do bridge design, box culvert design. And they would have a, they would send out a request for proposals to different engineering firms. They would come back and say, well, we'll do these three culvert designs and, uh, staking and inspection for X number of dollars. And then they, they could choose who they wanted. They didn't, it, by it being a request for proposal, they didn't have to take a little bid. And then they just hired what it, whatever engineering firm they wanted. And they had a signed agreement or signed contract that they would provide those services for, for X number of dollars. But, yeah, there's, there's multiple engineering firms around here that are more than capable.
And I don't know. I think there's a part in the code where you can request bonding information and everything, and...
But you've still got a bond on this project, right?
Yes, but...
So you could still...
My experience with bond is a joke. You have to sue the bonding company to get them to pay.
Yeah.
That's, it's, it's a joke. It is an absolute joke, bonding companies.
And there's no money in retained insured over?
No.
No. On this project, no, because it was closed out. I mean, but even when we did have on DD2, it was a, yeah, we were, we were going to have to sue the bonding company to make them pay. So what good is a bond?
We typically hold back for...
10%.
10% of the entire job.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you know, the...
And essentially, we don't, it was recommended for completion by...
The engineer.
The engineer, so that's...
Who should have had that information in his hand.
Because he didn't know he was missing it, because King never sent it.
Well...
But yet the contract that was made between engineering and the contractor states that they shouldn't have received it.
So we're going after, say, some West regards.
I don't...
Some West regards going after King.
Yeah, basically.
I don't know yet.
Yeah.
So we're going through the people that we deal with, with the engineer.
Right. Your agreements with the engineer.
Yep.
And the engineer's going after King for failure to provide the necessary documentation.
Right.
But we have other cases that are still, they aren't sure that it was all handled that way.
I mean, it's not just this specific one. I mean, we've had other contractor, or engineering firms that have had mistakes also. It's just that it would be a way to ensure that we are covered legally, hopefully.
On this one?
Hit, no.
Contrary to popular opinion, we're engineers, we're not perfect.
We are.
Well, no, I mean, things happen, I mean...
You could use your license for saying that.
Yeah. That's right there, all in this report. But the, as the trustees, and Rick has brought this up time and time again, regardless of all of this, or in spite of all this, you have the Asgore plan prior. Then we see, if not, it still would have been the same issue, we'd have known about it a lot sooner.
Right.
That's, that's just a given.
Right.
So it's requested that the contractor keeps track of what they're doing. But then, uh, the engineer also specifically requested by the landlords in the district, by Branch C, that they have one, someone on site. That's the responsibility of engineers in company. No one is getting any different. Now, if we ask you, even though you're not the contractors, but you're the representative to be out there watching it, that's your job.
Right.
And so, but the good thing is about this, that they have stated, gave it to Mustergard, that it is their expense, not the landlord's, to this...
It'll, it'll get results.
They're going to get a result.
They'll cover the initial expense, and then they'll go after King for their cause.
They can...
They had the agreement with King that they would provide all of this information.
Right. They can go back and forth, but the bottom line for us as the trustees is to get the correct information that Asgore's...
Yep.
Well, the other side of the coin is, is the future endeavors, we want to figure out how we can make this work smoothly.
Right.
And I still believe that you just, when they request payment, you, whatever you dug, whatever you buried, has to be recorded.
You got all of the...
Us with the copy.
You got all the stuff, stuff to date, before you get paid?
Before you get a check.
There you go.
You got your stuff, just like you did. 50% of the bridge is done?
Right.
That's where you're at.
And that's what we have with the pay estimate, but the pay estimate prepared by the engineering firm.
Because you're assuming, because the engineer supposedly has that information, which he did not.
Well, he didn't have the, the connections, but he had the lineal footage that was installed, which is what you guys were basically...
Right. Now the next step, like Bruce said, okay, in the contract, which is going to be in there, all these connections and this lineal footage are marked, right?
They're, they're all ready, but they didn't.
Yep.
I mean, I would...
But now we'll ask that question, so that they can research that in case they have it.
You can just include language in, in your existing contract that says retainage will not be made until approved Asgore drawings have been accepted by the board of supervisors.
Right.
Because then you can look at them, the property owners can look at them, and they say, hey, wait, Bruce, I missed it.
Right.
And you still got...
Something.
Something to hold back.
Pretty much concise, all the stuff we've already discussed. And that's all good stuff. Anything else? If we didn't have all this fun stuff. Anything else for drainage?
I'll make a motion out of drainage.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All out of drainage? I think we've got...
Thank you for coming back in here.
Yes, you'll be in for this, probably.
Hey, uh, before we go, I want to, I got to make an announcement. This is from Diane Connors for the food pantry, which will be, the mobile will be the night, the first Wednesday, yep.
Night of November?
Yeah. She sent me a message and said, uh, sorry to bother you, but wanted to touch base. The mobile food pantry is Wednesday, the night, so close to Labor Day. Um, this is why I'm contacting you early. We will do, we have a, we're going to do a drive-through again. However, the glitch this time is, is they want boxes filled, um, before they just put it in, uh, whatever. There's going to be like 280 boxes. They're looking for help on the night. That would be greatly appreciated. They will wear masks, social distancing. Um, they're hopefully going to start at 1:00.
1:00?
Clients will be there at 4:30 as usual. Thanks for listening. If anybody could help, please let her know. She's looking for any of us that would be there. Um, I guess...
They're going to try to get, start a box.
You got a phone number for her, Bruce?
For phone number? Yeah, I got it.
They're going to start distributing it at 4:30, drive-through style.
Right at the drive-through style. They've been going from the north end up there by the old swimming pool. They registered there, then they can down along the fairgrounds and by the building. We run out, and they got two boxes or whatever, so that's the way to go. I appreciate it.
They need help packing the boxes.
Yeah, at 1:00.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
Today we have our meeting with CHS.
You can't always have a reason to get out of it.
I know it. It always works that way, because I've always wanted to help with food pantry, and I always have...
It's in there.
I know, that's what I've always wanted to do at night. Am I done in then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is she, is Renega being here on Zoom, or...
On the phone, I think. Hopefully, the phone. Zoom sucks.
Tell me that. I know my hearing's not...
There's got to be a way. We very...
We got a, we got a cable that goes from here to there. There's no reason you can't make it work.
Yeah.
And you should be able to pipe it.
If we called Jack in, so, so, great school.
So much, much better science you can have.
Figure it out.
We all can look at it and say, oh, sure.
Yes.
We're going to go find us a high key guy.
Hi. My grand daughter takes my phone, and she's like, where, where, Papa, you're hiding. And I'm like, you're hiding.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. We did, we did that during that.
No.
We did not during that.
Do, do, I think we already asked you, did anything else for us?
Um, I did have something I wanted to give you copies of.
We need to turn ourselves down on you.
I'm still on.
You're on?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the camera's still on.
Okay.
Doesn't take any action, um, just for you to look at for a future meeting. That's all I had.
Now you can make your announcement.
I'll make my announcement. Good for you.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.